All right, it's six o'clock and it's time for the August twentieth meeting of the Kennebunkport Planning Board. My name is George Littie, I am the Chairperson pro tem, standing in for the Chair and the non-existent currently Vice Chair. So, take quick attendance, we seem to all be here, Peter's here, Michael's here. And first order of, oh, if you're, we always had this announcement about if you'd like to join on Zoom, but you'd have to be here to know that, so if you've joined on Zoom, you are already here on Zoom and welcome, we will include you in the meeting. First order is approval of the minutes, and we had a draft of the minutes, did everyone have a chance to look at them? I was not in attendance, but watched the meeting and they seem to be in order, do we have a motion?
Motion that we accept the meeting, turn the minutes out, it's written.
Second the motion.
All right, all in favor say aye, looks like we got us a minute.
If I could interrupt for a second?
Please do.
Could we just get the minutes for twenty twenty-five put in the SharePoint file?
I agree.
I was looking for them last night for one of these findings of fact, and the last minutes were from twenty twenty-four.
Sure.
So.
We do post them all on the website as well, so I know that there's a lot of redundancy, but.
I didn't realize that, okay, okay.
All right, so next on the agenda tonight, and we're going to change the order and I have got to pull up the agenda here, sorry about that. All right, so we will take item number two, two five zero two zero six, one oh three Marshall Point, and move it to behind, to the next one, and take the first one because it should be fairly quick, which is item number two five zero six zero one, thirty-five Pier Road, Patrick O'Brien, Chris Darling Builder. This is the public hearing, and if you wanted to quickly introduce yourself, and anything new, anything that we need to know about?
Chris Darling, Chris Darling Builder, hired by the O'Briens to build the pier, nothing new.
Any questions from the board before we open the public hearing?
No questions on mine.
None, all right, with that, I will open the public hearing, is there anyone here in the public who wishes to speak about this dog? No one is standing forward, is there anyone on Zoom who has raised a hand?
One person, but no hands raised.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, so I will also entertain the motion, I love saying that.
Motion to approve.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion is approved, we have findings of fact for that which we will read at the end of the meeting, you do not have to be here for the findings of fact reading.
And get them from the enforcement.
They will go over to the town office tomorrow.
Fantastic.
All right.
Do you need to sign anything for this?
Yeah, we'll also, if you can drop off, I think we've mentioned this last time, we'll need a set of the plans with a signature box.
Still working on that.
Okay.
Two hopefuls.
Yep.
It's kind of tough getting someone to jump on.
When you get one, you can send it over to us and with a signature box, the planning board can come into the office to sign, so we'll get that.
Oh, for you guys?
Yes.
I thought I had sent you one, actually, I put one on there.
Yeah, we need a printed, like a full-size rolled printed copy.
Needs to be rolled.
Okay.
Like, where's the one, I'll show the example, like over there.
So, I can send you an email tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
All right, which brings us to item two five zero two zero six, one oh three Marshall Point Road, Marisich, Sam Hayden, agent. We have a public hearing scheduled as part of the site plan review, go on ahead, and as we do that, we received this afternoon a letter from an abutter from Walsh Engineering. Have you gotten a copy of that?
Oh, I have not seen that, no.
Okay, it's gonna, I would suggest that, is there anyone who can get you a copy right now?
I can email it to you right now.
Okay, email, got one right there.
I can read that.
And.
Should I sit down and read this before we have a discussion about it?
Um, I think that's, what would suit you best, we can go through item by item, or would you like to take five minutes and read it?
I think, I think kind of knowing what I'm up against would be helpful, so if I could take five minutes.
Let's do that then, if no one else has an issue with that, okay?
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other, we could do the reading of the findings of fact while you do that.
Yeah.
Can you get through the findings in five minutes?
I can read that.
I got a copy, don't worry about that.
You got them?
I have a copy.
Oh, thank you.
Is this the letter?
This is the letter, dated August twenty. Oh, this is handily underlined.
This is a disruption.
Well, while we're kind of in a break, you could do the findings of fact for the O'Brien.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's a disruption. He's trying to digest this stuff.
We can wait. You're courteous if nothing else.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just getting retangled in the wires.
Yeah.
I'm helping. All right, we're back on. So, we have correspondence, why am I looking up at that paper copy? We've got a correspondent from Anabutter, done, prepared for them by Walsh Engineering, and mentions several points, a quick summary about the height increase, based on the DEP permit, excavation cannot be accomplished on the property line without damaging the revetment. It would be, and then I know that there's concern about the uniformity of the top of the capstone and backwash onto the other property and other things that I probably don't fully understand. But we also have William Walsh who prepared this report in the room, so that's helpful as well. So first, your comments on this.
Sure, hello, my name is Sam Hayden, I'm with Haley Ward representing Bob Marisich, one oh three Marshall Point, and good way to start.
You're doing great, you didn't know we were gonna sandbag you.
Yeah, so I would, I'd like to just start off by saying I think a lot of the concerns are the results of an older set of plans being reviewed by Walsh Engineering, and I'd ask if you have the paper maps, if we could give them to Walsh and allow him to review them, because I think a lot of the questions and concerns he has are addressed in the new design.
Could we go through them point by point?
We sure can.
And pull it up on the screen?
I can pull it up on the screen.
Okay. Okay.
Just, yeah. Paper maps are oftentimes easier than to do on the screen, so I give him a chance to look at things.
I don't know if I should have Bill introduce himself at this point, or do you want to go through it point by point? If you guys want to do a tag team, it's okay with me. All right?
Sure. Read my stuff there?
A little shorter.
As long as it's not a chain match.
Okay.
Guys can do the engineer's secret handshake and stuff.
Right, thank you Mr. Chairman Bill Walsh from Walsh Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of Meg Jandell, who is in Abutter to the property, and we did go through and sort of review the plans and tried to understand what was being proposed here, and there were, I think, I would say there are technical issues which.
Just a second, Bill, just a second. Since you are not representing the client, this technically puts it into the realm of public hearing. I think.
That's correct.
I think that's correct, so I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak, and you've introduced yourself, Ablay, thank you, Bill.
I have, thank you, so I think there were several issues that we saw, sort of looking at the plans, looking at the permits, trying to understand what was going on. The first one was the PBR permit that was submitted and approved. Clearly in those regulations, it says a revetment cannot increase in height with their depth, and the plans, at least in our review of the ones that we had, it wasn't especially clear whether we were raising this two feet, in some places it refers to it, and in other places it did not. We put that, we have a plan, that we actually marked up the plan in the back of the submission there, and sort of indicated those places where we saw the discrepancies.
As you go through this, Bill, it may be worthwhile to find out, based on the new plans, on the current plans, if these items have been addressed, would that be helpful?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you guys share a little bit.
Okay, all right.
So let's go through that item first, if it's okay with you.
The height of it.
So, when we initially submitted this project to you guys, we were proposing a substantial increase, I kind of inherited this project from a PM who didn't quite understand the rules about front dune. We've since revised down to a replacement in kind, no increase in square footage, no increase in height, and so the PBR that we received from the DEP is accurate and it reflects the design in the most updated plan set, which is no increase in height and no increase in square footage.
Okay, does that seem satisfactory to you, Bill?
I guess I'd like to look at the plans if I can, yeah, exactly.
So with that point, want to try the next?
Yeah, sure, I think that with that, looking at, and again, I don't, these plans were dated six eighteen, I think, that we were looking at, there became another issue with the height, which is sort of the section that's drawn on the plans, shows about a two-foot dimension for stones that, if they were somewhat round in shape, they could be much larger, they could be in the eight-foot diameter, six to eight-foot diameter size, and we have a two-foot section, so it doesn't fit, if that makes sense. So I think that's another question, if we're using that size stone.
Let's, going point by point, has that been addressed in the current plan, or is that still an issue? That's you.
We, we are proposing smaller stones, the current height of the proposed stones are about four feet high and we're planning on to embed them into the, in the revetment, so that there's no increase in height. And in terms of, in terms of the roundness of the stone, the original plan, as is pointed out, had these capstones that were rectangular, and so the contractor believed that he could get quite rectangular stones, and so we're relying on him to follow the plans and place rectangular stones, you know, and not, we're not talking cut blocks here, but rectangular enough to be regular and match the cross-section that we provided.
So that I understand if the rocks are of an irregular shape, that what looks like would only be two feet might actually be three feet because of the nature of the rock itself, and you're looking for more uniformity and rectangular-ish.
Well, yeah, so, we're counting on the contractor to.
To be able to deliver.
Yeah, to match the cross-section that we provide.
Thanks, does that help, Bill?
And, and our permits from the DEP require no increase in height.
Right.
And so, you know, I don't want to paint us into a corner here, he's not gonna increase the height, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, that's not gonna fly.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess the point of that is, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be deeper in order to get the stones in there, I think, than the detail shows.
Okay.
And I guess the question there that we had was, where are we going higher? And secondly, I think if we have this capstone on the backside of it, it sort of creates a curb, so when I say overwash, it's the water that's coming over the top of this, which will happen, it wants to run back to the ocean, and if we have a curb stop there, it's gonna.
It's gonna run along.
It's gonna go along it and go out to the sides.
Is that still the situation with the current design?
We're planning to replace in kind, so no increase in height, so.
And what about the capstone behind?
So there is, there is no capstone, the stones that sort of would be used as the capstone, we're now just embedding them to be a backstop for the rest of the revetment, but we're not increasing the height over what was existing, so it's purely a replacement in kind, and we would anticipate that, you know, the water would behave as it did prior, which in this instance was to backwash over the revetment and drag a bunch of the yard out.
Right.
Into the resource, so we would anticipate that same thing to happen again, but with the, with the large stones preventing that, you know, the displacement of the stones along the top of the revetment.
You bet, and if it's my recollection, that original design with that capstone behind, that was what was increasing the total impervious surface.
Correct.
Which is why it got pushed back from the board in the first place, primarily.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's been a change in the current design as well, and I know you will want to look at that, Bill.
So this isn't, this isn't happening, or?
Yeah, we, well.
If you guys.
Would you mind if we just sort of stepped over here and?
Sure, that's, yeah, that's fine.
They're gonna talk engineering stuff.
So, this, the way that we determined the elevation of the existing revetment was that we took shots along, along what was in place. The revetment was pretty substantially damaged, and so we don't know exactly what the height was, but we took shots along, along the top of the revetment with what we had, and our updated plan set reflects no increase over that elevation.
Okay.
And so, we're, the elevation of that, of that capstone, or that sort of large stone at the top of the revetment is gonna match what we've got.
Right, what it was originally.
Right, and we have, we have survey to sort of back up that elevation.
Okay.
Presumably there will be an as-built that will confirm that we have not gone above that elevation.
So I think just a couple of items, I guess I would ask to be sort of cleaned up, if you will, on Sheet Four. It does say, existing face of revetment, proposed revetment to follow existing face two feet above existing grade, so I think if that.
And maybe that detail gets adjusted, if you will.
Yes.
Right, that's just a, they're kind of fine engineering points, but I think the contractor could get a little confused with that.
Okay.
And I think the, I think the last item might be, I guess if that capstone's flush, or the backer stone, or however you want to refer to it, that should be okay with the overwash.
Because they've removed that back stone.
It's kind of there, but.
It's no longer a couple-foot curve.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
It's more.
Level.
More level.
Right. So I guess, I think the last item is, and I guess I didn't look at the plan, let me check this, what did it say?
And on one of these, it has to do, while you're looking, Bill, it has to do with lines being staked out by a surveyor, and it sounds like you have had a surveyor come in?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, you know, the rod is in place, it's
Okay.
Sort of halfway flagged, but we certainly would make sure that the property line is clearly marked
You bet.
When we're, before we go to construction.
So I think the last item would just be construction adjacent to that property line, so the new, or the latest regulations from DEP, not necessarily in the PBR that he filed, but in the newer regs, they're requiring a five-foot offset from the property line, so you can't put a new revetment, if you will, into a space that's more closer than five feet to a property line, unless you get an abutter approval. My point in that is, if you're digging down four, five, six feet right next to a property line, unless we're doing sheeting or shoring, that you're gonna undermine the revetment as it goes on to the Jandell property. So I guess we'd request that it be offset five feet, so that at least, or whatever is required, so that we're not digging on to the Jandell property.
I think I understand what you're saying, in response to that?
I'm not particularly familiar with the five-foot rule, when we're replacing in kind, I don't believe that that is the case, but I, you know, a lot of my permitting is in New Hampshire, so I could be, I could be mistaken, but where this is a replacement in kind, we were planning to replace the entire area that Bob has ownership of, and, you know, the revetment that extends onto the neighboring property is protecting his property as well, so there's, you know, there's no intent to undermine or negatively impact the revetment on the abutting property. So I, I guess, we would like to see the revetment extend all the way to the property line with the assurance that we're not going to be undermining what's going on on the neighboring property, that's against our interest to do that, but if the board decides that, you know, it's in the interest of the town to prevent any, you know, issues between neighbors, we'll hold back five feet, that's not our preference, but our preference is to get approval, and if five feet is the difference between approval and a denial, then we'll go there.
Does the town have any observations on this five-foot rule, DEP? It's okay if you don't?
We don't really get involved with DEP, Galen's on, online, maybe he might be able to chime in here.
If Galen had a hand raised, or if he's otherwise occupied?
I think, I think if I may, I guess the issue that I see is if you have a property line here and you're digging four feet next to it.
Yeah.
You've got an angle of repose of at least one to one.
Yeah.
That's either, that's either going onto the property, if you're on, if you're on that property line, that soil's gonna give way.
Yes.
And therefore you're gonna be on to the Jandell property, does that make sense?
I think I understand what you're saying, and the five-foot permit would allow you to get pretty close.
Right.
But not override onto the neighboring property.
Correct.
The thing is, you don't want to undermine the revetment on the Line Dell property, and what's maybe unusual about this is the two, call it the wings or ends of this revetment, go beyond the property line.
They do, they do.
So it's a bit odd there, but it's protecting both properties, I think.
Correct.
At the end of the day, what you want is a hole that is serving the purpose, not, hasn't been weakened, hasn't been undermined.
Right.
It is continuous as it is, was built originally.
Correct, correct, then I guess that's the issue, is that we're digging down to set this in place, and as you do, you're gonna encroach on to the Jandell property, if we go right up to the property line.
Last thing I'll say on this is, before we move on, is natural angle of repose does come into this if we were dealing with, you know, native fine-grain material, but we're talking about, on that side of the property, fairly large stones, and so I, I'm not sure that we. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not dealing with something that's gonna, you know, repose.
You're putting big rocks on top of other big rocks.
We're, well, we're excavating the area that's currently revetment, placing large stones in there, but there's, I mean, this area, this area is covered with large stones, so. I'll leave it there and the board can make their decision, I don't want to belabor it, belabor it. If five feet is, makes a difference here, we'd like to.
I think the way the board would do it, since we're, as Nadia appalled, but we're not involved with the DEP permitting process, is that, were we to approve this, are you the case manager?
I am.
Okay, if we were to approve this, that we would include that it would follow all regulations put forth by the Department of Environmental Protection adhered to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, world about end, and that if it's four feet, or it's five feet, or the code enforcement, or the contractor, or the neighbors say, well, here's the reality of where we are in the field, and it's three feet, or it's five feet, or it's seven feet, or it's one foot, that it gets worked out, so long as the hope is for a couple of properties in the area that are essentially built on sand dunes, that we're not gonna make it worse.
Or impact the remaining revetment that is on the adjoining property.
Right, the rocks, the rocks obviously aren't following the property line.
We don't want everything great here and then destroying something else, that's the entire point. But because this is a delicate situation and there is a permitting process involved, the authorities that oversee that are probably likewise reasonable people, as are the good people of Kennebunkport, so we're not trying to, you gotta rebuild something, and we're not trying to make it worse.
If Walsh Engineering wants to come out when the contractor is working on that side to oversee, and, you know, make sure that, you know, no undermining is occurring, and sort of give his opinion and make sure that the interests of the abutter are attended to, then we'll, I think we're fine with that, we can, we can make sure that we schedule out what happens.
Does the revetment continue on the Jandell property, and is it at approximately the same height? And I mean, is there an argument that says if they go actually over the property line, I recognize that's not the intent.
Right.
But if they did, they're, they're doing, in my mind, nothing but supporting their revetment as well, at that, at some level, right?
Yeah, there's, there's obviously, you know, the property line, you've got stones that cross the property line, right? They're not following the line, so.
They didn't line them up.
No, exactly, they didn't line them up, and that, I guess, my thought is that if we mark the property line, we know where it is, contractor knows where it is, he's gonna know, he's gonna dig down four feet, and when he does that, he's gonna start to get that, it's gonna start to collapse in on him, and he's gonna have stones along that edge that he's not gonna be able to touch because they're gonna be half and half, or a third and two-thirds, or whatever that happens to be, so I think that's gonna have to be a judgment call that's made in the field at the time. My thinking is that if we establish the line, we know where it is, they know where it is, contractor knows where it is, then you can easily pick and choose the rocks that you're going. contractor knows where it is, then you can easily pick and choose the rocks that you're going to move without crossing the property line. That's really the, the purpose there.
Make sure that they're stable, though, if there's one there that you don't want to lose it, and it happens to be on both sides, then, okay, you may back off there, but here I can go in and drop another one.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds reasonable.
Yep. Uh, to your point, I think it's not too, I don't want to destabilize what, what Meg has, right? I think that's the, that's the challenge there, of sort of fitting that together.
He doesn't need to raise his hand.
Ian, just speak.
He's a panelist, he, he is a panelist. If he would like to, he can.
It's not in our interest to destabilize either, just, I'll just point that out again.
Nor, nor does it.
We're not trying, we're not trying to do that.
Nor is it in the, in the town of Kennebunkport's interest to destroy two properties, which are, are facing hazardous situations, that whatever is resolved here needs to work, uh, for both parties, and also anybody else who happens to be in the neighborhood.
I, I would say, I think that the, I think this is a nice, I think this is a great thing to add as a condition. It's kind of outside the scope of the planning board to re-engineer.
Yes.
Plans that technically do meet what you guys are, are requiring. I think, you know, if there's concerns about the DEP regulation being met, I think just a condition, it sounds like the applicant is very happy to meet that condition if it's a requirement.
That's a condition anyway.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, from a staff perspective, I don't really see an issue.
So I, I think that, uh, uh, the, the neighbor and Bill have raised good issues, and it looks like you have carefully considered those prior to this letter coming forward. And with the new design, seems to have addressed most of it. We do have this concern about what's gonna happen on the, you know, on the, on the border. Are there any other concerns, uh, Bill, that have not been addressed at this point?
Um, I, they're all, they're all here in the letter, I think, and I, I, you know, I, I, there's that one detail that shows the capstone up, I'd, it'd be great if we could just make a note that that, that it's not supposed to be that way. I guess by default, we do by saying that it meets the same elevation that, that is there now, meaning.
Is that still in the full size, in the new plans?
Yeah.
Can we strike that in the NIFL?
If it's, yeah, if it's a text issue, we can just use pen and strike it out, I think. Um, if it's a, a drawing issue, I would say we'd need a new set of plans.
Yeah, uh, the. For the folks at home, uh, I'm holding up this, this is, this is the detail, sort of a generic detail, um, that specifies the stones and, and some other, the pieces of detail. Um, and it, it currently does show the, the capstone, sort of, second draft of, of this, uh, design, um, that, in terms of, in terms of its elevation. So, um, we, we can, we can either strike this, or, or redraw as, as needed, and.
If, if the board decides to approve, can it make a condition of a new drawing?
We just, we need you to sign the plans, and so if you sign plans that are incorrect, then.
So if the plans are corrected, and we come in to sign the plans?
Yes, that's fine, so you could do the findings of fact.
Okay.
If you wrote the condition in.
Okay.
Or you can sort of take the findings of fact back, so you're not handwriting the, any other conditions, and we can sign them at the next meeting.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Any other, uh, anything else from the public hearing? Anyone online have a hand raised to contribute to the public hearing?
No hands raised.
There are no hands raised. With that, I will close the public hearing. Any more discussion from the board, based on what we just heard?
So, yeah, just, just to be clear, we are putting a new condition in the findings of fact to comply with the main DEP?
I, I think that's already in the, the findings of fact.
No, I don't think it is.
It's not as a condition, I guess.
Not, not the DEP as a condition.
What do we, what do we put?
I, I, I actually took it out, because they already had approvals. If that's the wrong one.
Yeah, that complying with the DEP regulations is not a condition. I think it's implied that people will comply with them, but it's not explicitly stated.
They have DEP approval. If the DEP says that it has to be five feet, then that's what the DEP approved, and it's up to code enforcement, and contractors, and, uh, all of those people to figure it out. For us, it's, the letter is, we've, we've got approval from the DEP, if the DEP says it's ten feet, well, it's ten feet. I don't think we have to make it a condition. What do you think?
I guess, I think we're not gonna ask them to drive the speed limit coming in either.
No.
Um, I do have a question, Mr. Galen. For Walsh Engineering, the five-foot rule, is that for revetment walls that are in a coastal sand dune, or is that for any revetment?
Well, I, I believe it's for any revetment. Um, I think it's, to me, I think the, the only reason for citing the, the DEP permit would be that it does say that you can't increase height with depth, right? And so, if it's in there, then it's sort of covered in both places, so.
I think what I'm, what I'm hearing from the applicant though, is that there's no increase in height, depth, or width, and so our only issue here is, are they disturbing area within five feet of the property line?
Right, that's true.
And the offer's been made by the applicant to have Walsh Engineering out there when we're playing around close to the property line, to make sure everybody's comfortable with where we end up.
Yes.
Or maybe you'll do that even before you start digging, because it may be obvious.
Yeah, but you can get that, you know, get, get their opinion of, yep, okay, moving this rocker, not that rocker.
And surveyor stakes.
You gotta stay back a little bit more here, but here you're okay.
Exactly, I think that, I, I think the way to do it is to mark out the property line, we can come out and visit when they start excavating, and make sure that we're not disturbing rocks that go across the property line.
Yeah, and we completely agree and identify with any, any neighbor property on any, uh, change that up against a property line, that it not, uh, increase any likelihood of damage or detriment to them.
Right.
How often do you get to say detriment? Okay, any other questions?
None on my part.
Then we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I guess I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved. Well thought out, difficult situation, and you, I think you guys rose to the occasion.
Thank you, um. So, the, the, the detail that is, uh, so we discussed a little bit earlier, um, I, I can get you, uh, a.
If it's the kind of thing that can be scratched out, and we initial, that's okay as well. We don't have to get a full set of drawings.
Okay, um, I, I think that would be.
We'd probably love to have a full set of drawings.
I think, since it, since we have an actual drawing showing different dimensions than what is being approved, I would recommend submitting a new drawing.
Okay.
Person, personally, but if, I mean, if there's some way that you can use some fancy engineer language that says, this drawing's inaccurate, and make a note, I, I don't know, whatever the, the board is comfortable with, but we need to somehow make it very clear that what the drawing is on the plans.
Because I don't want to lose my engineering license.
A new drawing, I think, is the cleanest. So if, I mean, if you can, you can, the board doesn't, oftentimes will just come into the office to sign something, so it doesn't necessarily have to be two weeks before you get them back.
Yeah, that's good, if you could have the drawings tomorrow, then we can show up.
We can probably get them signed by the end of the week.
Many of us are responsible.
Excellent. Um, we will, uh, we'll do our best to get you drawings here.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, thank you all. Hope this works for everybody. Okay, with that, that.
I, I'm gonna take these drawings.
Yep, sure. Um, so do you guys still want to read the findings of fact, though, into the?
Oh, yes.
We don't need new findings of fact.
No, we don't. We are, we are eager to read findings of facts. In fact, the next item on our agenda is, uh, we've got a couple of findings of facts for the, the two, uh, lucky applicants we had this evening. Can we read them simultaneously?
That'd be nice.
I'll read one, and you can read the other. Oh, I, just, just, we can get it done, all right.
All right, we'll start with O'Brien. Uh, Kenny Bunkport Planning Board, findings of fact and decision, the application of Patrick O'Brien, reconstruction of a recreational dock, thirty-five pier road. Uh, following site plan reviews pursuant to Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance held on eighteen June twenty-twenty-five, to July twenty-twenty-five, and six August twenty-twenty-five, and a public hearing held on twenty August twenty-twenty-five, Kenny Bunkport Planning Board makes the following findings of fact and conclusions, and renders the following decision, subject to the conditions enumerated below. Findings of factor as follows. The applicant is Patrick O'Brien, the owner of record of thirty-five Pier Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine, oh-four-oh-four-six. In a letter dated three June twenty-twenty-five, the applicant authorized Chris Darling of Chris Darling Builder LLC of Hollis, Maine, to act as the family's agent in this matter. Mr. Darling and/or Bridgette O'Brien, Patrick O'Brien's daughter, represented the applicant in all discussions before the planning board. Property is identified as map thirty-dash-one, lot twelve, on municipal tax assessor's maps. The property is located in the Cape Porpoise East Zone. Property is entirely within the Shoreland Protection Zone, and is partially within the Hundred Year Flood Plain and the Resource Protection Zone. The site is approximately point-three-seven acres in total size, and includes approximately a hundred and forty-four feet of shoreline, adjacent to Cape Porpoise Harbor. Applicant demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a warranty deed for the property conveyed to Patrick G. O'Brien and Geraldine O'Brien on twenty-two November nineteen-ninety-six, which was recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds, book eight-oh-seven-seven, page oh-eighty-nine. There are no easements or restrictions on the property. Property is a residential property with three existing structures, a ledge, rock, seawall, and a recreational pier, which formerly extended from the seawall to the northwest. The pier was destroyed in the storms of January nine, uh, twenty-twenty-four. In an application dated four June twenty-twenty-five, the applicant is proposing to reconstruct the pier in kind. The former and proposed dimensions of the pier are twelve feet in width, by twenty-four we, uh, feet in length, supported by an existing deck and ten marine-grade, ten-inch hydrojet pylons, sunk three to four feet deep where possible, into poured concrete footings, which will be pinned to the bedrock ledge with half-inch rebar. The pylons will further be braced by two-by-eight-inch cross braces and two-by-twelve-inch cross beams. Number nine, the predecessor pier was grandfathered structure built into a waterway subsequently deemed a high-velocity zone, in which such structures are non-conforming. Furthermore, if such non-conforming structure is discounted, or is discontinued for a period exceeding a year, and in this case, it's been approximately eighteen months, it may not be rebuilt, except that the planning board may, for good cause shown by the applicant, grant up to a one-year extension of that time period. Applicant's daughter explained that the property owner is a California resident, who brought the home, bought the home in nineteen-ninety-six for seasonal use and/or rental, and is now eighty-eight years old. In late twenty-twenty-three, her father had a significant medical procedure, which led to a lengthy recovery into twenty-twenty-four. Upon his recovery in the summer of twenty-twenty-four, Mr. O'Brien was able to travel to Kenny Bunkport to assess the damage and make a plan, but his trip was cut short by the hospitalization of his wife. The combined total of these personal circumstances and his unawareness of the structure zoning and one-year window for reconstruction led the applicant to seek an extension from the planning board, uh, during which, uh, to rebuild the pier in kind. The one-year extension was granted by unanimous vote at the two-July twenty-twenty-five meeting. Ten, the applicant requested a waiver from submitting site plan reviews for roads and curbs, bumpers, sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, signs, and the proposed floor, use of floor area. Ordinances two-forty-dash-ten-point-six-C, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And the planning board approved those requests at the two-July twenty-twenty-five meeting. Eleven, pursuant to the requirements of Article ten-point-ten-A, the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decisions, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless, unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings, which would otherwise compel denial. There are sixteen such findings, and all of them are yes or non-applicable. Number twelve, when a board develop, uh, proposed development is located within the Shoreland or Resource Protection Zones, in addition to the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinances outlined in eleven above, approval of the development also requires that the board make positive findings based on the information presented that the proposed use was, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items, all of which the findings was yes or non-applicable. Any negative findings by the board, uh, means that the applicant, application has been denied, and the application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, Article ten-point-ten-A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more find, identified findings that would otherwise compel denial. As noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to the Article ten-point-eleven and ten-point-twelve-E. Number one, applicant pursuant to ten-point-twelve-E shall notify the planning board prior to the transfer of rights to construct an approved project. Number two, applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the York County Registry of Deeds before any permits may issue, or before any construction activity may commence. Number three, topography maps showing existing contours with contours labeled at appropriate intervals for prescribed slope must be submitted. Number four, construction plans shall include a current professional's engineer's stamp. Number five, any area of soil disturbance at completion of construction shall be stabilized with vegetation and mulch in accordance with the main erosion and sediment control best management practices manual. Number six, applicant shall comply with all the terms and conditions of the Town of Kenny Bunkport ordinances, including section two-nineteen, floodplain management, as well as the flood hazard development permit, and the main DEP approval prior to issuance of any building permits, dated twenty August twenty-twenty-five, uh, to be signed by the planning board.
On the next one?
Your Honorable?
Kenny Bunkport Planning Board, decision, finding of fact, uh, uh, indecision, sorry, a- application of Robert Maric, Maricic, Maricic. Uh, reconstruction of an existing shoreline stabilization revetment, one-oh-three Marshall Point Road. Following site plan reviews pursuant to the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinances held on nineteen March twenty-twenty-five and six August twenty-twenty-five, and a public hearing held on twenty August twenty-twenty-five, the planning board makes the following findings of fact and conclusions, and renders the following decision, subject to the conditions enumerated below. Findings of fact are as follows. Number one, the applicant is Robert Maricic, trustee of the Robert J. and Andrea E. Maricic fam, that, family trust, and owner of record of one-oh-three Marshall Point Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine, oh-four-oh-four-six. Number two, in a letter dated twenty-six June twenty-twenty-four, the applicant authorized the firm of Haley Ward of Saco, Maine, to act as their agent in this matter. Mr. Sam Hayden, project scientist of Haley Ward, represented the applicant in all discussions before the planning board. Number three, property is identified as map thirty-one, block three, lot ten, on the municipal tax assessor's maps. Number four, property is located in the Cape Porpoise East Zone. Property is entirely within the Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones. Number five, the site is approximately point-five-one acres in total size, and includes approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet of shoreline on the Atlantic Ocean. Number six, applicant demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a warranty deed for the property conveyed to Robert J. and Andrea E. Maricic Family Trust on seventeen August twenty-twenty-three, which was recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds, book nineteen-two-nine-eight, page seven-six-eight, on twenty-three August twenty-twenty-three. Number seven, the property is a residential property with an existing residential structure and a stone riprap revetment down to the exposed ledge on the shoreline of the Atlantic Ocean. The existing revetment was significantly compromised in the storms of January twenty-twenty-four, particularly along.
particularly along the upper edge. Number eight, in an original application dated twenty-seven February twenty twenty-five, with subsequent updates on twelve May twenty twenty-five and eleven July twenty twenty-five, the applicant is proposing twelve-hundred-and-ninety square foot of permanent impact for stone riprap revetment repair replacement and twenty-one ninety-five square feet of temporary construction impact for trenching to embed the repair, repair materials and workspace. All work will be done above the highest astronomical tide and from the landward side. The temporary construction impact area will be restored to previous, previously existing condition according to a planting plan submitted following the completion of work. No expansion of the toe of the slope into the resource, the width or height of the revetment is proposed. The project is a replacement in kind within the existing footprint, so no increase in lot coverage or elevation, which is currently fifteen to sixteen feet, is proposed. Number nine, the applicant received a permit by rule from the main DEP for the project in June twenty twenty-four. Number ten, applicant requested a waiver from submitting site plan reviews for high-intensity soil surveys, parking and loading, roads, curbs, bumpers and sidewalks, stormwater and sanitary systems, landscaping, lighting, signs, and proposed use of floor area. Ordinances two forty dash ten-point-six point C, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And the planning board approved those requests at the two-July twenty twenty-five meeting. Number eleven, pursuant to the requirements of Article ten-point-ten A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decisions, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings which would otherwise compel denial. There are sixteen findings, uh, all of which are either yes or non-applicable. Number twelve, when the proposed development is located within the Shoreland or Resource Protection Zones, in addition to the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinances outlined in eleven above, the approval of the development also requires that the board make positive findings based on the information presented that the proposed use, and there are eight such, uh, questions, uh, of which the findings are all yes or non-applicable. Any negative findings by the board means that the application has been denied. The application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, Article ten-point-ten A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial. And as noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to Article ten-point-ten and ten-point-twelve E. Number one, applicant pursuant to twelve, ten-point-twelve E shall notify planning board prior to transfer of rights to construct an approved project. Number two, the applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the York County Registry of Deeds before permits may be issued or before any construction activity may commence. Number three, receipt of pending NRPA permit approval. Number four, construction plans shall include a current professional engineer's stamp. Number five, any areas of soil disturbance at completion of construction shall be stabilized with vegetation and mulch in accordance with the main erosion and sediment control best management practices manual. And number six, applicant shall comply with all the terms and conditions of the Town of Kenny Bunkport Ordinances, including Section two hundred and nineteen Flood Plane Management, and receive a flood hazard development permit signed by a code officer prior to the issuance of a building permit dated twenty August twenty twenty-five.
Read that again.
Yeah.
That was great.
So we're done?
Uh, oh, so I have to approve the findings of fact? What are we doing?
You just have to sign them.
Just have to sign them? No more, no more talky-talk? So, uh.
I have one set of plans for you guys to sign from the public hearing last time.
Okay.
For fifty-eight Langford.
I wasn't here. Do I still sign them? I watched it on the Zooms.
Perfect.
I'm all set.
I think motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.